I'm not gonna lie, the the powers that I have as mayor, just mayor. Those are powers that a governor would have.
Right, exactly.
I ran and got elected as mayor, but everything past that point, everything that I do is what a governor does.
I agree, so you might as well just be governor in name rather than.
But let's rewind for a second. Why does the violent felon without a firearms license have a firearm brandish in this room? I am not going to be an accomplice to somebody committing a crime, so get the fuck out.
Well, Alan, I didn't look up his profile.
Yeah, well, maybe we should do that, huh?
All right, all right, all right. Point taken, point taken.
Not that hard. That guy literally has robbery of a civilian firearm on his license. And he was brandishing in nineteen eleven. Jesus fucking Christ, Siobhan.
I didn't look at his profile at all. I was listening to Michael. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have listened to his judgment.
So when you're dealing with security matters, you don't vet people immediately?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd more like to do question.
I'm gonna question Michael on that. No, they used to be a gang, cream. They're not around anymore.
They're still a gang. He's tagged.
I didn't know that either, okay? Alright, lesson learned. You know, I'm I'll I'll, you know, I'm gonna look for a new secretary of secret service.
Robbery of a security firm.
Is this one of the people that Michael was planning to give uh body armor to? Michael might need to chill the fuck out.
Hold on, pause. What do you mean give body armor?
No, 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 no. He 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 was looking to empower a secret service with those things, but he was denied. Cause I was like, Michael, I don't.
Yes, he was asking, but if it was people like that, that he was planning to have be a part of it, oh, that's interesting.
Allow the council of eight meeting to proceed. As is expected, the rat Solomon Walker is not in attendance, as he has made no effort to be in attendance. Or inform any of us of his attendance ability.
Has he responded to anyone's outreach?
I texted him that he was suspended and he never responded, as of yesterday, when I switched phones, he had not responded.
When is the petition filing being put out?
Great question. Well, Snow, as I'm sure you're aware, has decided that he is going to give up his buyer license like a fucking asshole. So is McNee still gonna do it?
Oh, boy, McNay, fuck it, I got you, as I paint Bobby Charles his bounty. So I wrote up a little bit of a legislation for some bounties, and I wanna see what you guys think about it. It's a little simple, but I I just wanted to get the effective ideas down before we format it.
Maybe we should change Los Santos to San Andreas. Alan, what do you think?
What?
Do you think we should change Los Santos to San Andreas and Glenn's bounty proposal?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Uh, go ahead and change it to San Andreas.
I don't wanna get all political about it, man.
We are political, we are politicians.
Come on, okay.
Nice.
No, I think this is good.
I think it should be more than a hundred thousand.
So it can be.
It can be.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Uh, I guess it has to be approved by the treasurer, so is a limit necessary or?
Why I was saying for a hundred K plus, but a limit, just so.
So if it's a fifty K bounty, the mayor can do that without approval per this act. I don't think there's an issue with that. I think that's fine.
I think that's reasonable. I would say the only downside of this, if some mayor in the future is just like spamming the bounties. But at that point, I would say it's negligent.
I don't, I don't think it's a good idea. I think that it's easily abusable.
Making a hundred thousand dollars.
You think people are just gonna get somebody turn themselves in and?
Yep.
Let's split the cash.
Of course.
I mean, I do think it should be used quite sparingly.
True.
I think the bounty should only be a thing during states of emergency.
I mean, if we look at what happened during the whole terrorism fiasco, how was it that every single damn person in the city was too damn scared to say shit except for Bobby Charles?
Because he was alleged to be giving them the money under duress.
Okay, Bobby Charles didn't snitch on them. As a result of the way that I worded the state announcement. He was able to say that his nine one one technically contributed to them being caught. He did not snitch on them. So no one snitched on them. He called in a nine one one about someone completely unrelated to Bowling Brook, and they happened to be in the area.
Hear me out, maybe this bounty legislation is only for capital crimes.
That works for me.
That's a good idea.
That's fine.
All right, votes. Glenn Frugal, I assume you are a yay.
Yay.
Solomon Walker, the pussy bitch who hides in a fucking rat hole every single time there's an amount of adversity or conflict for him.
Oh my god.
He's in his rat hole. She's in his rat hole still.
Philippa Cantor.
Yay.
Alan Crane.
Why, why, didn't you already do this?
I'm not making sure it's legal.
I don't care.
We'll come back to Alan, Cornwood.
Um, what are the votes currently?
Two guesses, one rat who didn't give one, and Crane had popped.
Oh, there we go.
Why do you need to know that to vote, Cornwood?
Well, I don't, I was just asking.
Okay.
What, did you vote, Cornwood?
He's reading, I guess.
We gotta focus up.
Yeah. Hour in, this is.
No, I'm I'm focused as shit. I'm just over focused, cuz really what it comes down to is the mayor, and it's it, do you trust the mayor or not? Yes, you do. I I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes for that.
And if they abuse, guess what happens if a mayor abuses bounty? They can get impeached.
Exactly. Yeah, so for me, it's a yes.
I'm gonna vote no on this, because I feel like it probably already has been abused, so I I I don't like it.
What do you mean it's already been abused?
Yeah, what?
I would be, I would be willing to bet, not by you, I'm saying I'd be willing to bet that at least like somebody's fines from the terrorism case got paid off those five hundred K bounties. So it's like, I feel like it's already failed at least once, so that's enough indication for me to say no. At least as it is, without without more cooking. Do I, do I have proof? No, but I don't, I don't like the fact that it was used. I don't, I don't like the judgment that was used to put five hundred K bounties on someone with three hundred and fifty K fucking fines. That's just like, I I I don't trust.
It was the DOJ that decided that they should be fined three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
After the bounty was administered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone in particular, I'm just saying I don't trust it as it is right now after seeing that. And feeling like it was probably, it was probably taken advantage of in some way.
Hear me out, what if we just add a line in here that if a bounty is collected, that fine will be added to their sentencing if found, if found guilty?
Oh my god, that's.
You paid for your own bounty. Congratulations.
People might push on that one.
You shouldn't have fucked around. You should have just turned yourself in. You should have believed if you were really innocent, that you were innocent and trusted in the process.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but it is complicated.
It's not that complicated, it just means judges know when they are rendering a verdict and they're doing a guilty verdict, right? They're rendering a guilty rhetoric, that when they are figuring out and accounting for the crime and everything that occurred, et cetera, et cetera. Um, in their sentencing, right, that they just account for the additional amount of the bounty. It's asking for judges to do an additional step, and it's um, shouldn't be that difficult.
Then at that point, what if they don't get paid the bounty? Now they're, now some people are gonna get just royally fucked. Whereas some people are, I don't, I don't know.
This is only for capital crimes, right? Only capital crimes.
I think the DOJ has failed. I think that they, the three hundred thousand dollar fine for terrorism was not sufficient. I think that the uh, the three days in prison, even though these dumb motherfuckers broke out of prison twice. And that there was no additional punishment levied on them for doing so, apart from the uh, the very slim charge of prison break. Which was only applied one time, as far as I'm aware, was sufficient. These guys, these guys got a uh, a sunny vacation stay in Bowling Brook. You know, like, it's the weekend, dude, it's party time, you know?
Yeah.
Back to you, Crane.
But I said, I don't care.
Yes, and I don't care abstain, or I don't care yay.
Bro, you good, Alan? Is everything okay?
No.
What's wrong?
I I really, uh, I really wish I spoke better Uzbekistani.
Yeah, really not your fault. It's not. Uh, because a a an agent of Uzbekistan coming in six months late to change things that they don't like, that's not on you.
Yeah, but I I, you know.
Does it, does it feel like, does it feel like everything that we've done so far has been, uh, I don't know, called into question, undermined?
Shat on.
Shat on. Is that what you're feeling like? Like, all the effort and work that you put into this has just been kinda like kicked around and pissed on?
Like you have to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by naves to make a trap for fools?
That's what it feels like when I have to uh, face down against uh, you know, sovereign citizen like Cal Soze. Someone who commands such authority and and power and influence over the average person. People like Bobby Charles, who had uh, met him minutes before he uh, was shot down in Sandy Shore's police department. And found with three thousand bullets on him and an automatic rifle. It's hard to contend with that. It is. Because he will say that his intentions are are clear, his intentions are well-meaning. His intentions are to to clog the holes in the perceived local municipal government, but at what cost? So is it yes or no or abstain?
Sure.
Okay.
Bounty's passes.
That's it.
A Solomon Walker, the pussy ass loser. Philippa Cantor.
God. A doctor brought to my attention uh, that Max, you were in the hospital yesterday, talking about hospital security. So I wanted to broach that. You suggested.
I I uh, I said, what if someone who is committing violence or other disturbing acts within Crusade Medical were to be deported as a result of that?
Yeah.
Let's just say uh, that particular issue is above our pay grade and is presently being addressed.
Okay, okay, if it's above our pay grade, that's fair enough. I can say from the entirety of the attendings, as well as well as Janetti on the board of directors. And numerous other members of our staff, we don't want that. That isolates us and puts us in a position where people uh, will only treat us as if we are doctors.
No, I've no horse in this race per se.
That's, that's all I've got.
Alan Crane, do you have anything to present?
No.
Cleese Corwin, do you have anything to present?
Couple of things were brought up to me this week. One is the, we have a possession of moonshine, moonshine charge, fifteen units is misdemeanor possession. They found new bottles. They're they're about eight times bigger than what the old moonshine bottles were. Uh, there was some discussion about changing it from units to like uh, a weight value or something. The other thing I had brought up is uh, people were asking if we could seize vehicles that we find as far as as part of a street race. If we could consider street racing a crime so violent, because you're, you know, you're going in a loop around the city at a high rate of speed and even people can get killed. And uh, you can cause a hell of a lot of damage to the city and everybody else, if we can have that uh, if we can have those vehicles seized from the racers.
This is what the VAF system is for, and I think uh, I think we've talked about it.
Essentially, street racing would be three VAF points.
No.
No.
What dumbass cop suggested that?
That's what was brought up.
One-strike system?
No, who? Well, what dumbass cop?
I don't even have a name attached to this.
Uh, that's absurd and ridiculous.
Just a few, a few guys came up to me, I just wrote it down on my chicken scratch. My suggestion, I think if we had street racing take, be one VAF point. Is that something that would be uh, plausible?
It's not a violent felony.
I I mean, I think you make an argument for for street racing being considered violent, but then. Yeah, you could talk about reckless being evading or uh, violent too.
There we go.
I mean, street racing is different though, because you're, it's not just one vehicle driving recklessly around the city. It's a part of an organized group of folk with a bunch of vehicles driving recklessly around the city as opposed to just one vehicle. I I do think str- street racing is a, is a step above driving recklessly or reckless evading.
It's not inherently violent. Like, do you want street racers to be treated the same way as people who shoot other people? I don't think driving your car fast is the same thing as as getting shot or shooting people.
I mean, if you hit, if you hit someone with your vehicle, you know, that's, it's all with the deadly, right?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily. If you intentionally are weaponizing your vehicle, right? If you're intentionally weaponizing your vehicle, that's different.
Okay, then can we come up with a, a system separate from VAF? Like a, for street racing points or some shit, and to get caught as a part of a street race, I don't know how many times.
Uh, I'm not opposed to that, but I I would like to see it drafted up and like fully fleshed out and thawed out.
Okay, I think that's it for now.
Uh, Murphy Brown.
I've just been outlining a law school to sort of get people more engaged in the law, just as citizens. And also to create a track and a certification program to help us scout good attorneys and give them a meaningful path to getting bar certified. That's in there. I don't know if it's like ready for a vote or anything like that, but that's, that's all I got right now.
Okay, does this have to be like council-approved?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe not.
Sounds like to me this is just an event that Glenn can approve the money for if he wants to.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll approve it.
All right, yeah, I'll just be in touch with you about that when we get it going, and uh.
Yeah, just tell me how much money you want.
Yeah, that's about that, that's about what I have, um, you know, depending further feedback, if anybody has ideas.
Uh, I put notes on the bottom already. I thought their their mock trials monthly could probably be too intensive, and doing them quarterly would make more sense. Or every other month, I think.
Approved or endorsed or attended or said yes to probably six or seven different types of mock trials and training courses over the years. I'm open to whatever you guys wanna do, please do it.
I think we have a surplus uh, by this point, six months in, in um, closed docket cases. That generating a mock trial with a assorted company should not be difficult as long as there's attendance. So, we'll see what happens with that.
Okay, well, Max, you know, my answer to this question, when I present, is a fuck ton of stuff. We have so much. We got one, two, three, four, five. We got five things to go through today. The FU Act, Felon Uniformity Act. It's a working title. I was just trying to get something that could be called FU. Okay, where's the Heinous Act exception?
In legislation, we put it in there when we made it.
Wait, where?
An expungements, expungement protocol, violent capital crime exception, individual may pursue an expulsion at one or more of these crimes on record. So long as they are where they were, never be purged from one's record, as they've been deemed too far severe, the possibility being removed.
Oh, good, good, we did do that. Okay, well, this is going further, like Heinous Act exception on crack.
Why?
Uh, why, Max?
Why is this necessary? What's the why for? Uh, just let her explain.
All right, uh, this, this, this is um, this act would go farther than than keeping them on the uh, than simply keeping it on their record. Uh, it would essentially uh, reduce privileges. I mean, you can read it, um, do menaces to society from enjoying, you know, certain privileges and luxuries. It's Bill of Human Privileges, not the Bill of Human Rights. Also, the three strikes rule. Uh, first degree murder is included in the Heinous Acts with the addendum serial assault and killings with the idea, right? That this would introduce mandatory minimum sentencing for serial assault and killings.
Yeah, we, I don't, I mean, there's.
I mean, uh, listen, I'm just bringing this up. I put it in here.
I'm not, you know why that's not possible, and you also know why I'm not in a good position to explain that, so what?
I think we have different ideas on this topic. We can all live for later.
It's not our right to decide that, though.
Life in prison has typically been our right.
Yeah, for serial killers, that's very different.
I mean, life in prison has generally been on the table when death penalty is on the table, right? I mean, do we wanna quantify what the death penalty crimes are?
Yeah, but what you wrote in with no possibility of parole.
We love, that can be changed. We can add possibility of parole after, you know, a certain amount of time.
I'll, I'll stop interjecting. You just go ahead.
I'm, I'm willing to change things. All right, this is not, and, ahem, I'm willing to change things. This is negotiable. There are, there are not hard things in here that that need to stay, all right, uh, entirely, right? Like, I'm willing, I'm willing to, but there, there's plenty of things that we can work with on this. I mean, Alan, I I put the right to take hands. The hands, we don't need to bingo that. You know, I anticipated that you might not be the biggest fan of that one. I'm willing to give.
I think the hands is a little far. I think that's a bit far.
What do you mean?
Oh, look, I've seen countries that take people's hands, okay?
I believe in reformation. You can't do that with no hands. It's so hard.
Good guy, Glenn. Look at that, got the studies back.
This is supposed to be a collaborative process, anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Does that mean one first degree murder? Are you saying they should lose their hands?
It don't, it does say, it does say after, after three times.
So it's, it's, yeah, taking someone's hand.
They only have one?
Yeah, it's only one.
Taking someone's hand, as long as it's three times.
There's some things in this I agree with, but most of it I disagree with, to be honest.
Okay, what things you disagree with? Let's, let's workshop them.
I'll, I'll go with what I agree with, well, willing to agree with. Right to vote, that's an interesting one. I'm okay with that maybe being taken away. Let's see, let me go through them.
How is it that someone who is a treasonist?
License, I agree.
A terrorist, how is it that they should have the ability to determine who is in public office?
No, I'm saying they shouldn't. That's why I agree with that.
I thought you, I thought you meant to take away the thing.
I'm agreeing with what I'm okay with getting taken away. I agree with right to vote getting taken away. I agree with weapons license. Freedom of speech on Twitter, maybe.
If it's like terroristic or something, I suppose, I mean, I I guess, what I asked you about is what does that?
We saw how Twitter was used and weaponized against the government to spread seditious language.
Does this mean like, you get a Twitter ban if you're found guilty of terrorism? That's a crazy increase. I'm like, ban them if they say, you know, fucking horny things.
I wasn't saying if they were outright guilty until they fucked around and found out again, right? Uh, but they already had the guilty thing, right? That they should, you know, be careful if they do treasonous language again, cuz they've already proven, you know, that they're a danger to the government once.
I'm not okay with taking the hands away.
That's, that's just to mark it up to mark it down. That's, they'll remove that.
I think curfew restriction is also not viable.
I'm gonna tell Vingle that you struck this down, Glenn.
Oh, I love curfew.
I don't know who that is.
Sorry, how did you feel about free healthcare? I want them to have to pay doctors.
Uh.
That can work, but I don't think they're gonna do it.
Yeah, I think that's very hard to try.
Feasibility too hard to enforce. No problem, removed.
Yeah.
So what was it for free housing when they pay the treasurer five thousand dollar monthly?
They're not gonna do that either. It's just not gonna happen.
It won't.
Glenn, who the hell pissed in your cereal this morning?
It's not viable.
You support that, Cornwood?
No, I'm just saying, this is no to everything today.
If they got treason, they're not gonna pay the treasurer five thousand dollars.
Right, why would they respect the authority of the state? Right, that doesn't make a lot of sense, cognitive dissonance.
Twitter ban is good. I think they should be able to appeal that if they get reformed.
Okay.
They should take a seminar or something.
Wait, with the ability to appeal upon completion of a reeducation seminar, we'll work out the details later.
That can work.
What about peaceful assembly? They're menaces to society. They shouldn't be gathering.
That's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
What do you mean slippery slope? I was trying to take their hands.
That was just all the way down the fucking slope.
I think it's more of a plateau. Okay, so peaceful assembly, you wanna leave them that?
Like, what are we talking about right now?
Treasonists and the serial killers all gathered in a unholy union.
Why is there an entry in here about the privilege of weapons license?
It, it was just ensuring any additional weapons licenses. I I I had bad phrasing here, but like, any class of vehicle, I was trying to change this to any class of weapon. Cuz they're a violent villain and they shouldn't get it anyway. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah.
Just making it super clear, but, you know, easily removed. It was redundant, it was redundancy.
Now that thing for freedom of movement, it's a good idea, but it's never gonna happen.
No, probably not.
They're menaces to society.
I agree with you, Siobhan. I agree with you.
So they should be outcast.
I agree, but they're not gonna be able to do that. Anybody doing this isn't smart. They broke the law.
They should have to walk around town with chains on their legs.
Fine, no, 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 they can keep their freedom of movement. All of it, though? What about the curfew?
I wouldn't budge on the curfew, Siobhan.
I don't know how you enforce that.
Believe in the curfew?
I believe in the curfew. Only bad things happen at night. If you're driving around town at three AM, chances are you're the doing crime or stopping crime.
That's not night, that's the morning.
I don't have an answer to that statement.
Okay, let me just, let me, let me just, let me just go around the table really fast. How does everybody feel about the curfew? Max? I'll come back to you.
So.
Okay, go, go ahead.
The, the, the curfew is hard to enforce.
Sure, sure it is. It is hard to enforce, but not impossible.
It's not impossible. I, I, I could take a leave of curfew, I'm gonna be honest.
Okay, all right, Glenn, you already made your thoughts. Cantor, how do you feel about that curfew?
Honestly, mostly same, I guess. It wouldn't be like a, I mean, if they happened to be pulled over at night or something, then they, they fuck people up.
Exactly, you know?
Uh.
That's all I'm saying.
I think.
Well, if they're getting pulled over, they're already committing a crime.
Is.
Probably.
Would this just be forever, once they've committed this crime?
Possibly.
That's where I think it becomes a very big.
Well, no, 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 here, no, no, it's not forever, okay, cuz they have the option to actually be able to get expelled through the death coliseum at the bottom.
Okay.
I think a lot of this is better as a probation thing.
Oh, yeah, I stole, I took this directly from parole guidelines.
Think that some of this you could be harsher on if it was temporary. But if it's forever, it's a very hard ask.
All right, all right, all right. You know, let's um, Alan, how do you feel about curfew?
Uh, I'll let you guys finish.
All right, all right. Cornwood?
Yeah, hell, I think, I think curfew's good.
Murphy?
Um, I have, I have absolutely no confidence in the good faith of this legislation as a whole. I'm against the entire thing.
You don't like us that?
I think.
I guess that you would. I guess that would be your take, cuz that, that's just so like you.
Yeah, it is, it is like me. I thi- I think we have spent more than enough of this session targeting your enemies. And maybe we should do something that actually helps the public, instead of just every week meeting to find new ways to target your enemies.
Why, who the hell was this target?
Oh, I don't know, who's? You'll live with your regrets.
Capital level criminals impeding the government are not an issue, Murphy. That's what you're essentially saying. Got it. Okay, cool. Thanks for letting us know your take. God, I regret biting my tongue earlier.
That's not what I said.
Stand strong. Stand strong.
Well, what, what did you mean?
You know what I mean.
No, I don't know what you mean, Murphy.
It's very clear what I mean. I do not have any essential confidence in the good faith of this legislation or the emergency powers legislation.
They, did they get to you?
No. No one needs to get to me. It's clear as day. All we have been concerned with is finding more ways to fuck over people who have wronged you. Instead of trying to help people who have like not wronged us. So, I've had enough, I've seen enough.
You gotta understand something very clear. They didn't just wrong me, they didn't wrong Siobhan. They wronged TJ Walker and his entire extended family when they murdered him in cold blood. They wronged the people of Los Santos when they needed us most, when we were going to be seeing stuff about famine, to literally stop people from starving. Okay, they wronged, they wronged the people of Los Santos.
Whether you like it or not, they paid their price for that in prison.
Ooh, three days?
It was said whether you like it or not.
Uh, oh my god, surely that would stop, oh wait, no, I've been shot three different times.
Okay, so we should make ex post facto bullshit laws that apply to people after the fact. And that should apply to everybody, that, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I think it is.
Capital level crimes, I, I, I'm gonna say right now, if, if three times terrorists, or three times treasonists, or three times serial killers are on the fucking streets. I feel like, I feel like the system has failed.
The system has failed uh, on a DOJ level, when they were handed down probably one of the lightest sentencing that I've ever seen for a capital crime or heard of for a capital crime. Uh, if, if, if the system on large failed when they broke out of prison twice. The system failed when they uh, did not reform and have continually been hunting and trying to punish people that decided that they would do the, the horrible act of acting as a check and balance for their crimes. Their continued crimes, the crimes that they have failed to realize were bad. They still think they were right about what they were, what they've done, and they still have no intention of even taking this punishment or, or feeling like this is even a punishment, because they have a, a cast of minions who are slinging weed on the corner to pay for their fines. It, it, the laws don't apply to them because they are working outside the system.
What you two are blind to is that there are good, law-abiding citizens who don't like what they see and don't like what's going on. The optics of everything that's happening is terrible, and more and more people are going to turn against what we're trying to do here. And it's been a while since we've done anything uh, productive for the actual people who put us here and put their trust into.
Definitely didn't. Hold on, definitely didn't fund Pride Month the last time we met, definitely didn't approve seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be handed out to them. It's not that the, the optic, the optics are important for one reason, okay? Um, they are important to people who are actually invested in what it is this council has tried to accomplish, okay? Optics from someone who is associated with a terrorist or a treasonist, they do not matter. They do not matter, okay? And they might get loud on Twitter or in public and, and say that the government's corrupt or whatever, but they literally cannot cite any example, any substantial example of this corruption. They can't.
So you, you think it's perfectly fine and perfectly normal and a good look optically for, for the two of you to do whatever fucking job in government that you feel like any given day of the.
Oh my god, you are literally repeating that.
That's what Mr. Casey said yesterday.
Murphy, Murphy, I don't disagree on all your points, but weren't you crying about not being deputized just a couple weeks ago? Are, are you gonna try to throw this in their face? I'm sorry, but what the hell?
A protection, but this isn't about protection anymore. This isn't about protection anymore. It's about you having a private army that you pay to fight your fucking battles for you, the two of you, you're fucking pussies. And you're dragging the rest of us who weren't promising the public all sorts of shit to get elected, who are beholden to our departments and our functions in relation to the commonwealth of the people of this state, of this city. You are dragging us into your fucking war.
All right.
And it's gone on long.
A counterpoint, okay? I think you're a pussy.
Oh, shit. Your opinion, man.
Nods.
I think you're a pussy. I, I, I think, I think you're worried that your, your previous and past uh, allegiance to CG is probably going to cause you some sort of blowback. I think you're disguising it as some sort of public optic thing, when in actuality, you're just worried about being hunted by them, and I know you're worried.
Oh, it's already been burned. I don't give a fuck about that.
Uh, I'm sure you don't. I'm sure, I'm sure you won't go crawling back to them when uh, you know, the time is right, either.
Well, like I said, you're entitled to your opinion. I'm entitled to mine. I think this has gone far enough.
Uh, I think I, I.
Cutting fucking people's hands off and shit.
So what are you afraid of, Murphy? What scares you?
Me? Oh, doing doing something I might regret or not doing something and and regretting it. You know, that's isn't that what everybody's afraid of?
I have no regrets.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, do you think that the the DOJ being ineffectual insofar as these guys' punishment is concerned is not a threat to the entirety of the city when crimes like this are barely punished?
I think they gave out the sentencing that they did. That's not, that's not my fault.
Well, i- i- in your opinion, I mean, like, let's say you were the sole judge.
Nor nor here's the thing, though. In terms of justice, right, in terms of due process, it's not my fault anymore than it is the offender's fault that they got a light sentence and now you're after them. You know what I'm saying? They didn't decide that. The judge did.
Oh, my God. First of all, the sentence.
Okay, first of all.
I'm not excusing them of what they did, but I'm saying you're punishing them for a sentence that you didn't like that they didn't give themselves.
The the they're they're merely an example that I use to describe why I thought the way that I did and why I feel the way that I did. Uh, they are not the reason that this was drafted up. This uh this this document was drafted up in order to carry the burden that the DOJ has failed to carry, which is to actually ensure that someone who commits the highest level of crime is suitably and appropriately punished. Uh, that they are they are.
Why haven't you talked to Crane about this before taking unilateral measures to solve someone else's problem?
This is what the purpose of the council is with their sentencing.
I I I'm not like, no matter what I say, you're just going to interpret it as me defending your enemies again. So like, it's 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 a there's no win situation for me to even have this conversation.
We're it's not about that, okay? I I think that you are a simp for them. That's fine, but this has no bearing on that, okay? What what I think you're doing is you are grandstanding in such a a fucking pathetic way.
These guys beat one of your lawyers, Murphy. They beat a cripple. Why don't you care?
Oh, well, what did he do?
I never said I didn't care. I said I don't support this legislation.
Into a helicopter blade. That wasn't enough for them. They beat a crippled man and they wouldn't do it alone either. They needed four of them. Oh, what did he do? He did his job. That's what he did.
Oh, shit.
I will jump in real quick here. I I I don't disagree with with y'all on on pushing back on CG more and things like this. Uh, I don't think it is just going after your enemies. I I do think that they deserve some sort of punishment for this, more so than what they got. But the tragic fact is, does anything we are writing today stop them?
No, no, it escalates this so that they continue to grab more and more power.
Where I kind of agree.
Uh, and negotiate with terrorists? You let them win?
No, God, no, never.
The verdict here then, in Murphy's view, is that any attempt to do this, any attempt to do the job of the government to ensure that the uh the the sacredity of of people in Los Santos operating as civilians and citizens, that their their life and value is now diminished because there is no rightful punishment for people who do these crimes.
I just won't support cutting people's hands off. Why is that so hard to understand?
Glenn, we took that out, okay?
Just to ask for that.
I was hoping you guys wouldn't notice it, to be honest.
Is there anything else we can cut off? Like, you know, the negotiation piece?
Uh, yeah, could be.
The policy of appeasement doesn't work because at that point, the the role and purpose of the government, of law enforcement, of everything, is no longer relevant.
I agree. I saw you try and they didn't give a shit. Um, I I don't know if any of this would help. And honestly, I don't really, I don't really have a solution, but I I I don't think we win this, which is tragic to say. I I'm not incredibly hopeful about it. Uh, I try to stay positive usually all the time, uh, but I I agree with you. Their punishment should have been so fucking much more. So many people before have had to suffer for way longer in prison for way less. Uh, but here we are.
Well, yeah, what about it? Well, what about Amber Quinn? Remember how long she was in prison?
Uh huh.
Remember Amber Quinn? Did she spend like twenty twenty one days in prison?
Yeah.
Justin Kidd.
Why don't we invite some of these fucking judges to the council meeting and talk to them about why all this shit is going on?
Because I got the head of bar and I got the chief justice in this room. I don't need to talk to other judges.
I'll be perfectly honest. I don't think that this decision is up to them. I I don't think that they can give as much time as they uh as, you know, as you're hoping for. It's just the world now. Essentially, all this is to say, I I think they're trying their fucking best and I think we all are. Uh, I don't, this isn't even for or against this legislation. I just don't really know what we do.
I just want to go back to doing what we normally do instead of chipping away at at people's rights and freedoms over this.
Did you have anything to present today? No?
Me?
No one's stopping you, bro?
What? I we talked about my law school just a minute ago.
Good.
Yeah.
And this is what we think is important for the people of Los Santos. Okay, this is not, the purpose of the council is not mutually limited to the shit that we want to propose.
Yeah, and I disagree with you and you call me a fucking simp. Fuck you.
You called me a name first. You called me a pussy.
All right, fine.
I see no, I see no downside to imposing additional restrictions and uh whatnot on people who have committed a capital crime.
I don't think this would have been necessary if there hadn't been a flagrant disregard for the authority of the state repeatedly, over and over and over again. For the workings of government, over and over and over again, if it hadn't been like that.
By the state, with the state.
Ad civitas. I'll use Latin since it's a dead language and there can be no confusion about what it means, which is what we normally do in law. Because it's not spoken anymore, so we know what all the fucking words mean.
And the state.
Ad civitae. All right, I already said it.
Well, what's civitar?
Civitae means like state in Latin.
Okay, so let's, okay, so we add state in there and what else?
I swear to God.
Yeah, we shouldn't uh present this today.
Okay, no, I feel like the temperature is wrong. We had the perfect opportunity to pass it and you said no. Everybody in this room is willing to vote yes. Just one for my, just one mind to you.
Yeah, I think Murphy's a pussy.
Yeah, but he was willing to vote yes on it before. That's the funny part.
Uh, I I think uh.
He is. He is a pussy. He's a giant wimp.
I think he's, I think he's uh, I think he's looking out for himself here, which is shameful, but.
Did you ever know that you're my hero? Sorry, I just uh, I wanted to sing that when you when you called him a pussy to his face. That was great. What about the big constitution amendment to change everything in Los Santos to the state of San Andreas and add those two little amendment things at the bottom, splitting up districts? Should we just save that? Just have that back pocket?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just save this for later.
Murphy is.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Turned a corner and disappeared.
Alan.
I'm just gonna do them.
Walked out, so I mean, we can't really do anything today anyway.
He did. I mean, we can get him to come back.
Yeah.
We can still do the People Protection Act.
Uh, hello?
Hey, uh, what happened? I went to go take a break while you guys were yelling each other and I passed out. I was starving.
Nah, I think we should. I I think we should convene. Uh.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep. Uh, congratulations. The council of eight has been rendered uh mostly impotent and cosmetic. Uh, we're done. We're done here.
I feel like this is how the terrorists win and and that's fucking unfortunate, but I I I get where they're coming from.
I understand on principle.
No, I I'm glad you did. This is the moment that I've agreed with you uh probably ever. I uh just making legislation against their enemies is not productive for the city. And I know that they can both be productive.
I just want, I just legit want want what's best for everyone and for our departments, respective to everyone. And uh, yeah, you know, I I I meant what I said. Pretty much sums it up. I give a shit.
Yeah, I I don't agree with all of it, but I think they're focusing on the wrong part.
Our government's a joke.
What was, what just, what?
It's a joke.
What's the solution?
What are you trying to do here?
The the solution is uh giving up.
Well, shit, what now?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure things will get real eventful.
Got my legislation passed. That's good.
Yeah, no nothing personal about that. I just have my suspicions that uh people profited from that last one. Kind of left a bad taste.
It's okay, Murphy. I like that you can disagree with me. Ya got pimp, Murphy. Ya got a backbone. You're doing your job.
At the end of the day, uh, no matter what.
Hmm.
Forgot the corn would arrive.
Murphy Braun's going to be making less money than you, be making less money than a tow driver, less money than a grime drug driver, less money than a than a the G six driver. Uh, the the uh, the expectation that he should not uh be paid even a little bit, even if he's a, you know, fishing.
No, yeah.
It it's super dumb. It's constructed by someone with ill intent.